We're recording, we're recording there.
And we've got a quorum. I didn't count. It looks like it was. Where's Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, we've only got five so far.
Yeah, I think we need to hold on here a minute. Brandy.
Okay, I do know that she is traveling and she was.
She's coming in right now.
Yep, there we go.
One, just counting noses here. Two, three.
There she is.
Five.
Scott Diener was six.
So yeah, Scott Diener's, we just finished up a transportation committee, so I know he's around. We'll give him a minute or two. Sorry for the delay. Well, man, maybe I'll just, we've got a quorum and it's time to start and we'll take care of our, you know, so I'd like to welcome you and call to order the February 23rd meeting of the Port Orchard City Council. And pursuant to the governor's stay home, stay at safe order, the city council meeting is being conducted via Zoom, Zoom webinar now. And we are streaming live on Facebook and we post this meeting on YouTube. We'll do that tomorrow. And we've provided the public access to this meeting by publishing the Zoom link. And there's also call in numbers for the public to participate in this meeting. So with that, I would ask that you join, Brandy, if you could bring up the flag. I see Councilmember Diener joined us, so we have all seven council members. Share your screen, Brandy. Janine, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic, which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a published agenda. Are there any modifications to this evening's agenda? I know, I don't know that we need to modify it. We have a discussion item that we're not prepared for. And we won't have that discussion item. The water capital facilities charge, we'll try to bring that back in two weeks. We just weren't. Other things got in the way today, in the last couple of days, so. Members of the public, if you're, so Councilmember Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to move that we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as published. And knowing that we won't have a discussion item the end, which is not an action item. Further discussion of our agenda. All in favor of approving the published agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We're to our first citizen comment period, which is for items that are on this evening's agenda. Is there any, and members of the public, just need to raise your hand and Brandy will bring you over to this meeting to provide testimony if you'd like. Brandy, do we have any members of the public wishing to provide comment this evening?
We have no members from the public attending at this time, mayor.
All right, we have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. Maybe we'll have some, some folks attending at that point. We have a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, a second by Councilmember Clausen to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have a presentation by Puget Sound Energy this evening, storm response efforts. Brandy is the representative from, there's Brandon there. Welcome, Brandon.
Hi, everybody. How's my audio?
Yes, great.
All right, let me start my video here and I'll be happy to kick off.
Perfect, and hopefully Brandy's got you set up to share your screen.
Does. All right, can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me minimize this window here. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Brandon Capps and I'm an affairs representative for PSE, representing Kitsap County. PSE is the electric provider for Port Orchard and we have 124,000 electric customers in Kitsap County. I'm joined today by my colleague, Robert Knoll, our local government affairs storm lead, who represents Skagit and Snohomish Counties respectively. And I want to thank it's time today. So before we get into, you know, the overarching agenda, this, this presentation, I wanted to cover a few items. So we'll start with our safety moment. We'll also go into infrastructure and readiness, customer resources, how we restore power. Things customers should know, COVID-19 impacts and outage communications. And then we'll wrap up with a brief local update. So as you're all aware of the windy season we have had and the hazards it presents, this will be a timely update. We have a longstanding safety culture at PSE and as such, any company related meeting over five people requires a safety moment. So today we'll be discussing down utility lines. If you see a downed utility wire of any kind, assume it's energized and immediately call 911 or PSE to report the incident. If the line is laying across the road, stay in your car because it's hazardous situation and please don't drive over the downed power lines. Sometimes bystanders assume that a power line is a communications line and it can be hard to make the distinction. So always assume that it's energized and definitely let someone know so we can come out and assess the situation on your behalf. All storm related resources can be found at pse.com/storm. And I would also encourage all of you to familiarize yourself if you haven't already with the PSE app. Because it provides a similar set of resources. And this is a great resource on our website for customers, including videos on how to prepare for outages, onsite instructor led classes and full PSE restoration plans. PSE serves over 1.1 million electric customers across our 11 county territory, including Kitsap County. As you can imagine, storms and outages are an all hands on deck situation for PSE with 900 plus employees having emergency response roles, which accounts for almost one third of the company's total employees. So that kind of just demonstrates our commitment to, to this as a priority for a company and that we understand safety is a value. We have seven regional storm bases, including one in Pauls Bow managing rapid response assessment and repairs. And we also have emergency coordination centers that provide oversight and direction for a coordinated response effort. The ECC opens when outages reach a threshold beyond what the company can manage under a normal operating procedure. And that's when you'll hear from me with real time situational reports, as many of you already have in previous weeks. The primary functions of the ECC are situational awareness and common operating picture, logistical support and coordination and communication support. PSE will restore facilities so that the greatest number of customers are back in service in the least amount of time. Now, we typically, you know, put these in subsets, so we start with systems prioritization, which begins with transmission systems. Transmission systems connect on the regional level. They're also how we get power from critical generation assets. So think dams, power plants, wind farm, and various other resources to customers at the county, city and neighborhood level. They also can affect other utilities, substations. Substations outages affect thousands of customers at a time and they're critical to re-energize substations prior to the next level of power distribution. Distribution systems, these are the systems that deliver power to your home or your business. And you see these through arterial rights of way and various other corridors on your daily commute. And then we're into customer prioritization. So within the above context, PSE considers additional priority restoration. Our emergency response coordinators maintain a list of critical infrastructure by service territory. These include hospitals, regional airports, water, wastewater treatment plants and/or sewage pumping stations, emergency shelters and emergency response and facilities from which people cannot be easily relocated, like nursing homes, assisted living facilities and the like. Now during any type of incident, you're going to likely see three types of trucks in your area or your portion of the service territory. You'll see an assessment vehicle, that's a PSE vehicle, and a service vehicle, which will be contracted by Patelco. Now restoration work is assigned after a damage assessment has been performed on impacted equipment locations. Once the type of damage and work is known, the appropriate resources dispatched to begin restoration work. PSE has an obligation to clear arterial rights of way even before restoring power and that may require several different visits, so we appreciate your patience. For most outages, PSE does not know when an outage occurs unless we get notified by our customers. Distribution lines are not monitored from a central office. Substations and transmission lines, those are monitored from a central office and we know immediately if those go offline. Please notify us of an outage through the website, app or call. And if you still don't have power back on after a couple hours, call us back and we will do our best to expedite the restoration process on your behalf. The outage map can be found on both the website and our mobile app, as well as bill pay, account info, usage and efficiency features. We also share outage information via social media, texts and situation reports to elected officials. And we provide much of this information to keep customers apprised during an incident. Once we have an idea of the damages from an outage, we'll begin to assign resources. Once the resources get there, we can give them an estimate of the time needed to restore. We typically post the high level of an estimated time of restoration, then update as we get a clearer picture. Now, this is just kind of an example of the interface that you would see when you're looking at outage map restorations and ETR estimates. And this is more of just an in-depth review if you want to get more detailed. All a host of resources exist on our website, customers can utilize precautionary steps ahead of future outages. The general rule of thumb is for an emergency kit to last you and your family for three days without power. Your checklist should include things like a first aid kit, water, a stove, food, cash, matches, a flashlight and batteries. And perhaps the most important emergency tool is a backup charger for your devices, so you can stay connected and assess your estimated time of restoration. I understand that recent outages have had an adverse impact on many of the communities that we serve. At PSE, we also need to adapt our response to meet public health guidance for our crews, such as providing PPE and social distancing. Adapting our response effort to COVID-19 may result in delayed restoration, but we're planning ahead to avoid any longer outages for customers. We will still have the ability of outside crew should we need them through mutual assistance agreements. Overall, the safety of our customers and crews is the number one priority and it's a company value. And we will continue to ensure their safety by following COVID-19 safety policies. In conclusion, I wanted to give a few local updates as well. Our crisis affected customer assistance program, which was an $11 million fund, distributed over $7.7 million to our customers. If our individuals still struggling to pay their bills, we have the help program and connect customers with light heat assistance whenever possible. As the pandemic remains present, we continue to waive late fees and haven't disconnected any customers since it began last year. I'm also pleased to announce the recipients of the PSE Foundation's 2020 competitive grants in support of COVID-19 relief efforts in our region. The foundation has awarded a total of $648,000 to 79 nonprofit charity organizations across the counties that we serve and operate in. Among these organizations, funds have been awarded to the Kitsap Daycare Association, the Kitsap Regional Library Association and the Kitsap Homes of Compassion. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and look forward to our continued partnership in the community. And that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions or considerations you may have. Thank you.
Questions for Brandon? Brandon, thank you for joining us tonight and providing this information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, we are on to our next item, which is a public hearing on the adoption of an ordinance thereby adopting the 2020 amendment to the 2016 general sewer, general sewer plan. Mr. Dorsey, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers. Mayor Ponsu, the city of Port Orchard is required to develop and maintain a general sewer plan or a GSP consistent with Washington Advisory Code 173, 240, 050 and Chapter 90.48 RCW. On a six-year cycle, the plan must be reevaluated, but may also be reviewed and amended on a shorter timeframe as needed. On June 14th of 2016, the Port Orchard Comprehensive Plan or the Porter City Council adopted ordinance number 1014-16, thereby adopting the now 2016 update to the Port Orchard Comprehensive Plan, inclusive of the 2015 General Sewer Plan update by reference. 2016 General Sewer Plan is scheduled for a full review and update in 2022, 2023. In that, that year shift really had to do with the Department of Ecology timeframe to approve the last plan. So I know somebody might ask that question of how it went from there to 2015 to 2016. However, in 2019 and 2020, the city undertook an analysis of the 2016 General Sewer Plan to identify any necessary updates. In March of 2020, upon completion of the sanitary sewer model, the city's Public Works and Community Development Department identified a need to update the sanitary sewer capital improvement project or CIP list within the 2016 General Sewer Plan. Updates needed were not only based upon the completed model, but also upon the fact that there has been significantly increased development activity proposed within sewer basin, which had been previously identified in both the GSP and the water system plan as the joint planning area. That, that's within the vicinity of Sydney Avenue Southwest and Southwest Cedric Road intersection. Staff also identified necessary informational updates on other projects previously identified within the 2016 General Sewer Plan that needed to be addressed prior to the next General Sewer Plan update, which is scheduled for 2022 and 2023. Ordinance number 008-21 is the result of those efforts and contains the proposed 2020 amendments to the 2016 General Sewer Plan. The Department of Ecology in the city received approval on October 12, 2020. A public hearing is required for the pending adoption of the ordinance, of ordinance number, sorry about that typo, 008-21, thereby adopting the 2020 amendment to the 2016 General Sewer Plan. So staff recommends opening and holding the public hearing.
Mr. Dorsey, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the general sewer plan. Ms. Janine or Brandy, are there any members of the public out there willing, wishing to testify on this matter?
There are two members in the attendees. I would recommend that if either one of them want to speak on this public hearing, that they click the raise their hand button and then the mayor can acknowledge them.
Or you'll actually bring them over? I can't see them.
Oh, correct, yes.
So if anybody wishing to testify on this public hearing related to the general sewer plan, please raise your hand and Clerk Brynerson will recognize you and bring you into the meeting.
I do not see the hand.
All right, with that, I will, one last call. Wishing to testify on the general sewer plan. Okay, we will close the public hearing on the general sewer plan and head into our business items. Next is, is item 7A, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapters 13.04 concerning general sewer, concerning sewer general facility fee credits. This is yours, Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Since November 2017, the city council has been discussing the current Porter, Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 1304 concerning water and sewer credits for capital facility charges. Most recently, at the city council meetings of December 8th, January 19th and February 9th, the council reviewed and discussed the code regarding sewer credits and general facility fees. The council agreed that the current code does need, does not provide a meaningful incentive for developers to build sewer infrastructure and requested that staff evaluate credit options and provide an incentive without jeopardizing the city's enterprise capital projects. Staff has worked with the city attorney to draft an ordinance that will provide a credit for additional capacity beyond the need of an additional development that is provided to the city for the completion of an infrastructure project. This credit will be referred to as the general facility fee credit for excess capacity. The attached ordinance outlines the requirements for this credit and provides a process for seeking the credit. Based on feedback since the February 9th council meeting, two additional changes to the draft ordinance were made. The first was in section 1304, 0406A2. And this was revised to clarify how the required sizing of sewer facilities subject to a credit agreement is determined. A provision was added to specify that the city may require additional analysis of the proposed facility and service area to verify that a facility is sized adequately to serve future growth. In addition, 1304, 0406E was revised to clarify that, that the general facility fee payment deferrals are at the sole discretion of the city and are too rarely occur. As was shown in the previous red line drafts, the ordinance was revised to include terminology updates in 13.04, 025 and 040. We found that the terms capital facility charge, general facility fee and general facility charge and sewer wastewater treatment fee were not used consistently throughout all code sections and so that discrepancy was fixed. The ordinance describes the timing for requesting a credit and requires that it be made with a new application submittal or with a pending application for development. The ordinance requires that there be an agreement between the city and the developer that addresses the credit. The ordinance details the amount, how the amount of credit is to be determined and provides an example of a credit calculation. And the ordinance provides a detailed process for approving the general facility fee credit. And that process is modeled after the process we used in the McCormick Woods Development Agreement for Transportation on their traffic impact fee credit. So the ordinance as presented allows credits to be granted at the discretion of city council and the proposed revisions to 13.04, 0406. The language does not require the council to enter into an agreement, but does provide the authority for credit agreements and a process, limitations and requirements if an agreement is reached. The ordinance will help incentivize development activity and private construction of public sewer facilities. Staff recommends that the council approve the ordinance as presented. Thank you.
Let's remember Lucarelli. And you're muted.
I'm sorry, I moved to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard, Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 13.04 concerning sewer general facility fee credits.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, second by Councilmember Kachardi. Are there any comments or questions? I think we provided you a red line with a couple of minor edits from what you saw a couple of weeks ago. And questions or comments?
Just like to thank staff for just their execution of this. It's been a work in progress and a lot of details and it's been great to see everyone just kind of challenge everything major twice before we cut once and glad to see it come to this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Diener?
I was basically going to say the same thing. This has been a long time coming. They've looked at it long and hard and have done a good job in providing this recommendation for the council.
Think it's important to note too, you know, based on some of the growth pressure we're getting and we're wanting to see growth, I think in the Ruby Creek area. These, some of these projects, we wouldn't be able to get to for years. And to be able to provide this meaningful credit to a developer to allow their project to move forward, will they build our, the facilities that are beyond their need is important. And this, this tool does this for us. It won't work for every situation, but it's gonna help us get our capital facilities plan built out much faster than we could. Other comments or questions? All right, be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapters 1304 concerning general sewer, general facility fee credits. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance has been approved. We're to 7B, which is the adoption of an ordinance. Adopting the, a lot of adoptions there. The 2020 amendment to the 2016 general facility plan. Mr. Dorsey?
For our council members, yeah, sorry for that. Charlie and I had a number of back and forth and revisions, so. Any things like that, I'll, I'll take responsibility for. And before I read, I'm not planning on rereading the record of that entire body. That was just right into the record for the public hearing and less specifically requested. So with that, earlier this evening, a duly noticed public hearing was held before the city council on the proposed 2020 amendments to the city of Port Orchard's 2016 General Sewer Plan. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance 008-21, thereby adopting the 2020 amendment to the 2016 General Sewer Plan.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to adopt ordinance number 008-21, thereby, thereby adopting the 2020 amendment to the 2016 General Sewer Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. And any comments, questions, concerns? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I, I think, you know, echoing what Councilmember Clausen and Diener said last time applies to this just as well. It's staff has done an inordinate amount of work and their due diligence to get this moving forward. It really is a good plan and worthwhile.
Other, other comments or questions? All right, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance approving the 2020 amendment to the 2016 General Sewer Plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. We're to item C, adoption of an ordinance amending the 2017 ordinance number 2017-19 and approving amendment number one to contract number 038-19 with Police Chief Matt Brown. I believe this contract amendment was emailed to all of you earlier today. And in a nutshell, the prior police chief had a practice of working on holidays and we had a provision in his contract that was cumbersome to manage for all parties. Gives it provided him an additional leave bank for when he worked on those holidays. And our current chief rarely works on, on, on holidays, works. And so we just felt it was appropriate to treat him no different than any other director. He'll have the same rights and benefits and leave provisions and to simplify this, this matter. And Debbie, I see you're here tonight. Do you have any other points you'd like to bring up related to this amendment?
Just a small one. The contract also copies portions of existing policy and attached some documents that would then require council action if any revisions were needed. So it does clean those items up and just incorporates them into the contract by reference. There's no changes to those sections, but it'll be easier moving forward with the chief should any of those items need to be changed in the future.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance as presented to amend ordinance number 017-19 related to contract number 038-19 with Matthew H. Brown, Police Chief.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Chang for the approval of the amendment number one to the police chief's contract. Questions or comments? Since we're talking about the chief, I just, you know, I was at Rotary today giving my state of the city address, which I need, I owe to the city council. I'll, I'll give that to you guys soon. And I was giving the Rotary president, who served on his strategic advisory committee, gave him accolades and of the job he's doing and I, I share those sentiments. Matt is doing an exceptional, Chief Brown is doing an exceptional job for us here at the city of Port Orchard and we're, we're, we're well served by him. So, and this is, that was my commentary on this matter. So with, if there are any other questions, you'll be voting on amendment number one to Police Chief Matthew Brown's contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract amendment has been approved. We're to item D, adoption of a resolution, repealing resolution. We're to item D, adoption of a resolution repealing resolution number zero two one dash six and approving a memorandum of understanding with the Guild representing patrol officers regarding retirement benefits. This is you, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello, council members. In two thousand and six, the City Council passed a resolution of zero two one dash zero six providing a benefit to employees who are not eligible for retirement plans administered by the State Department of Retirement Systems. The resolution arguably has the potential to have a broader application to future employees than, than was budgeted. There is currently only one employee who is eligible for and utilizing the, this benefit. That employee is a member of the Guild representing patrol officers. And therefore, we're recommending that the appropriate location for such a benefit offering would be in that employee's union contract. Therefore, we are requesting the council adopt a resolution that repeals the two thousand and six resolution and authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement with the city and the union representing that employee to retain that employee's benefit. And that MOU was also emailed to you by Ms. Archer on Monday as a separate document. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Lund or maybe a motion? Councilmember Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution to repeal resolution number twenty one dash oh six and authorize the mayor to execute a related memorandum of understanding with the Police Guild representing patrol officers.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Deener and a second by Councilmember Clausen. Questions or comments? Debbie just keeps digging and finding things we need to fix and thankful we have her.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, with that, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution repealing resolution number twenty one oh six and approving a memorandum of understanding with the Guild representing patrol officers regarding, regarding retirement benefits. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? All right, the MOU and the resolution have been approved. We're to item E, adoption of a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for participation in the Gorse Coalition and and an increase in funding for participation. Ms. Archer, Archer, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You got the speaking part tonight.
I know, appreciate it. So before you this evening is a resolution approving of a memorandum of understanding for participation in the Gorse Coalition and discussion related to funding for said participation. As you're all aware, the most recently adopted by annual budget included an allocation of funding for the Gorse Coalition, which we're all aware is an action oriented coalition to obtain state and federal resources to fund the recommended strategies for Wash, Wash Dot's worst interchange proposals. As we discussed at, I believe, two meetings ago at this point, and David Overton, a representative of the Gorse Coalition, attended that meeting and spoke with us. There are a number of edits that the city requested to the memorandum related to the funding structure. And those are located on page one hundred and thirty six of your packet or page four of the document itself. Those edits contemplated the city participating as a co-chair in the committee. And in order to participate as a co-chair, Mr. Overton represented that a co-chair would be contributing to the at either a tier one or a tier two level. Because the biennial budget included an allocation of approximately five thousand dollars in order to be a co-chair participant in the coalition, the council would need to increase the participation to a higher financial level, either tier one or tier two. And a co-chair committee member would have the autonomy to determine its own funding level. In addition to that, a co-chair committee member would be, would serve on the committee that directs the expenditure of the funding and directs the efforts of the lobbyists that the organization is intending to, or the lobbying efforts rather, that the organization is designed to form. That is, the all members will contribute in some way to the lobbying efforts, but co-chair committee is the body designed to be sort of the leader and, and giving the clearest direction to the lobbyist. And so for tonight, we have a resolution that has a blank number in it. I didn't want to presume what the council was feeling. So as the council discusses, the motion for consideration this evening is I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding and authorize funding for the Gorse Coalition of, and the moving member could, may insert a number there. Again, tier one and tier two. In order to participate at tier two, the minimum amount is ten thousand. Tier one goes all the way up to fifty thousand, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
Just so we can kind of start this conversation, I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding for the Gorse Coalition and authorize funding for the Gorse Coalition of twenty thousand dollars.
And I'm seeing Councilmember Deener raise his hand and I'm seeing Councilmember Luke Carelli might have a comment too. So Councilmember Deener, why don't we start with you?
Just a quick question at this moment. Can a party that is most affected by Gorse also be in tier two, which is a party's affected by Gorse? Or would we have to be tier one?
So you wouldn't have to be tier one as long as you're a co-chair. So we inserted the second to last sentence in the paragraph immediately preceding the tier one, tier two, tier three categories. We added the sentence, each co-chair in its sole discretion may set its individual annual target contribution amount. So
Okay.
Your members pick which tier they're in.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Luke Carelli, do you have a comment?
So would we be able to have an equal seat at the table by suggesting that we go with the level of ten thousand rather than twenty thousand? We budgeted five.
My understanding from Mr. Overton at your last meeting was the expectation would be to be a co-chair, you'd need to be in either tier one or tier two, so.
So they would. That's, that ten thousand is enough.
That would get you into tier two, correct?
As a co-chair.
As a co-chair.
Yes, yes. Okay. Councilmember Kuchardi, you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, kind of the reason why I called out, you know, the twenty thousand dollar mark is I think it's, it's just representative of what I believe, you know, we, we should be doing. This is a, this is a, a, a major project, you know, very, very impactful to the city of Port Orchard. Not only would I like to see us have a seat at the table as co-chair, but also, you know, showing that we're behind this and that we have a financial commitment to it. I think there's, there's relevance to that is, is why I made the, the recommendation at the twenty thousand dollar level.
And I, I can share and also that are from our last meeting and I, because I wasn't in, in a co-chair capacity, I was only informed and not in, in the front side of this. There has been a contract executed with Thompson Consulting as the contract lobbyist and it's the, the sole expense for this coalition and at a cost of twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month, so. It's, this is an expensive proposition, but it's very worthy. I think Councilmember Deener, did you raise your hand again?
I did. I think when we first started talking about this, weren't we talking about a, a higher, potentially a higher level of contribution greater than twenty thousand to begin with?
That was the ask.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clausen.
Well, just for clarification, that tier one is a range from twenty thousand to fifty thousand, so. There is a range to be in that tier one. This would be at the, the lowest level of the tier one category and I would have to agree with Councilmember Kuchardi in that I think this is a worthwhile project to be involved in. As Mayor indicated, the firm that we have retained, I say we as the coalition is Tim Thompson and I will say that he pretty much hit the ground running with this already and I know I have been a participant on phone calls with at least three of the state legislators, not just our legislators, but other members of the state legislators that are key committee chairs and so on, so. There's, there's a lot of work being expended already.
He has also reached out to our lobbyist. I, I talked with the, our lobbyist yesterday about that, matter of fact.
I would just, Mayor, if I may.
You may.
I would just interject that this Tim Thompson is not the Tim Thompson that was involved with, wasn't he with the port?
Yes.
So, yeah, so not to confuse the two people. They're, they're very different people and I too am supportive of the twenty thousand dollar contribution. It's my understanding that that can be changed annually if, if we need it to. That this would be our first contribution of twenty thousand, but sitting on the, the various transportation committees I do. I speak in favor of Gorse significantly many, many times and I think it's only appropriate that we have that level of contribution.
Councilmember, maybe before I go back to second bites of the apple, Councilmember Chang or Councilmember Rosa Pepe, do you have any opinions you'd like to share?
I'm, I'm not completely opposed to tier one. I just don't know what the benefit of tier one and tier two is. Certainly, tier one gives us better bragging rights. And I'm assuming that the Kitsap County and City of Bremerton are going to be tier one. But I'm, I'm not sure what more tier one gets us than tier two. If, but not being on the finance committee, if we have the extra money to support this, then, you know, I can, I don't have heartburn over giving them ten thousand more.
It's actually fifteen more than our budget, but, but yes, I, I, point taken. Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Well, would you go ahead and explain the difference between tier one and tier two? Because right now I'm, I'm tending to lead toward the ten thousand because of the initial impact. If there's a significant impact between tier one and tier two, then I, I'd like to hear it.
I think it's, it's more that, that we're, as Councilmember Kuchardi spoke to showing a, a larger commitment to it. I, I know Bremerton is tier one. I don't know the the exact dollar amount. Kitsap County hasn't approved this yet. They're still working through the ILA. But they're close to having it approved and Mr. Clausen, can you speak to what, I know the Transit Board approved the, the ILA. What, what's the funding level?
Well, they, they not only approved the ILA, but they gave me authority to go up to fifty thousand as a, a member.
Context there, so. Councilmember Luke Carelli, you raised your hand again.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering how much, what level Bremerton is committing to? Because I think it, it impacts them significantly and I would actually hate to see that we're the same level as they are considering the size of the city and their resources.
I don't know the dollar amount, but I'm confident that they're tier one.
I recall that they're, Dave, Mr. Overton said they were tier one.
But how, but you don't know what their financial?
Councilmember Clausen.
I don't, but I can look real.
Let me, let me respond in the sense, I don't know their dollar contribution, but the City of Bremerton has taken on the responsibility as the fiscal agent for this effort, which means they're going to have a fair amount of staff time devoted to this project in not only collecting all of these contributions, but paying the bills and all of that, so. I would say that the City of Bremerton, just that alone is a pretty significant contribution.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
Yeah, just, I, I kind of wish they wouldn't have put tiers on this. I think it's less about tiers and it certainly is not about bragging rights. I think this is about a significant project that we have been talking about throughout Kitsap County for years and years and years and while twenty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money, I, I think it's a very reasonable investment if we can get this move forward, which is why I'm, I'm supporting this at the twenty thousand dollar level. It's less about tier. I think it's just more about showing a commitment to, you know, providing the necessary resources to move this forward.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe and then Councilmember Clausen.
You know, as long as the finance committee is, is raising their hands, yes, and I'll go along with the twenty thousand, realizing that we get a chance to revisit this, I think annually is what I heard.
Councilmember Clausen.
Well, I would say that I don't know that the Finance Committee has, as a committee, taken an official position on this. I don't know that we've really talked about it, but three of us are already voiced our support. But the reason that I raised my hand once again was to suggest that I, I think the stars are starting to come into alignment. I was just on a meeting today with one of the staff members back in DC of Senator Murray and we had a long discussion regarding what's going on back in DC right now. They're working on developing a fairly large infrastructure package. And when I say large, I mean really large. Now, it's a long way from approval, but they're looking for these kinds of projects to put into that infrastructure project. This one will fit very well, so. When I say the stars are aligning, I think this is a perfect time for us to make sure that not only at the state level that this project is kept in the forefront, but also on the federal level as well that well, certainly Congressman Kilmer is part of the coalition as, as he can be. And he's been talking about the same with an infrastructure package, but today I'm hearing the same discussion coming from Senator Murray's office, so. Both the House and the Senate are kind of speaking the same language as near as I can tell, so. Having somebody like Tim Thompson and his operation making sure that, as I said, this project is in the forefront of everyone's mind. I think is really gonna result in some positive things for our community.
Councilmember Deener.
As the city is a direct beneficiary of Gorse, I, I can support twenty thousand at a tier one level.
Any last comments or deliberations? Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I'll just make the, the trike comment. The old saying is if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu, so we might as well be at the table.
All right, with that, you'll be voting on the approval of the Gorse Coalition ILA with a contribution level of twenty thousand dollars. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Thank you for that approval. I'll notify Mr. Overton tomorrow. We are to our last item.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. Sorry, one more. The, the technical advisory committee makeup, is that city staff or is that gonna be? Okay.
Mr. Dorsey.
Okay, thank you.
Other, others and his peers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our last item is the item F, approval of the February ninth, twenty twenty one council, city council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Clausen.
Do I move that we approve the minutes as publicly?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Luke Carelli to approve the February ninth council meeting minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And Councilmember Deener, do you want to abstain?
I do want to abstain. Yes, that was a meeting I was absent of.
I thought you might. All right. So we have six in favor, none in opposition, and then an abstention by Councilmember Deener. Let's, we pulled the discuss, discussion item, so we're to our council committee reports. Economic Development and Tourism, have you met since our last council meeting?
No, we've previously given that report, Mayor. Our, our next meeting will be March eighth, nine thirty AM.
Perfect. Utilities, I think that's the same case. And you re-reported out at the last council meeting, I thought, and I see your next meeting is March ninth. Which is the evening of our, our next council meeting. Finance is met though. So Councilmember Clausen, you have a report?
I do. We did have a meeting on the sixteenth where we discussed the the first thing on our agenda is typically the sales tax receipts. And the sales tax receipts for January is continuing to come in very, very strong. Right now, it looks like we're about twenty four. Right now, it looks like we're about 24% over our budgeted amount for January. Um, the REIT is coming in even better, uh, than what we had projected, um, right now compared to, uh, the budget. Uh, we're about 148% um, over, over the budget, which is about $43,000 to put it into perspective. So, um, that was, um, very great news to, to go over. We talked a bit about, um, cybersecurity and I know the mayor has continued to work on that, uh, project. We were informed about some software that, uh, might be available, but in talking with the mayor subsequent to that, I think we're reassessing our approach to the software. So that might be put on hold. We had quite a discussion with, uh, Nick Bond about, uh, some, his workload and some of the additional revenues that, uh, have been coming in as a result of the, uh, the growth that we've been experiencing here in the city. Uh, but with that gross, uh, income comes a lot of additional work. So, uh, he shared some proposed restructuring and, um, kind of some additional, uh, hours and, and moving some staff time around. Um, so I'm sure that will be coming forward to the full council at a later date. But, uh, the council or our committee was in favor of what, uh, both Nick and the mayor were proposing for changes, uh, in the, uh, community development area. We touched briefly on the, uh, water system, uh, CFC discussion and so on. There'll be, I'm sure more to come with that as well. The mayor shared, uh, some, uh, information regarding the, uh, city hall and some of the work that we're going to be faced with, um, with making the necessary improvements to city hall, uh, redoing the roof and that sort of thing. And basically he shared with us kind of the, uh, our debt capacity and our abilities to, uh, basically finance, um, uh, the improvements to city hall and, uh, how that would work out. We touched briefly, uh, we acted on one of the items here tonight. Uh, we talked about Chief Brown's contract. And we chatted a little bit about, um, the court security and some issues related to staffing for that position and how, uh, we might deal with that, uh, the plan that was initially thought of where we could contract with Kitsap County apparently is not, uh, uh, going to be available to us. So we're going to have to come up with some other ideas as we get ready to, uh, open up city hall again. So with COVID, I think we have a little bit of time to wait for that to happen, but, uh, that's something that we're going to have to deal with. And then we talked briefly with Debbie about the repealing of the, uh, resolution that we had action on tonight. So that was essentially what we talked about at the last, uh, committee meeting. Sean, but you guys have anything that you want to add?
No, I think you captured it, John. Great job.
Yeah, very thorough. Thank you.
I have two follow-ups that, from that, uh, meeting. And, uh, one, uh, we, uh, we discussed an intern for Nick's department. And Debbie got right on that. She starts tomorrow. Um, so she hit the ground running there and, uh, council member Ashby asked, you know, we were $61 short of $100,000 over budget in January, uh, for sales tax revenue and that represents our November sales tax. And, uh, I was making assumptions that it was primarily construction related because we've got all this construction going on. And when we looked at this at a high level, um, Rebecca got me some information today. Of that, only 18% of it is construction. The rest of it, 72% of it is, uh, retail sales, um, online shopping local. Sean didn't go on that vacation, so he bought his wife a big expensive gift and Amazon delivered it. So, so thank you, Sean, and everybody else that's continuing to shop local and buy online and have it delivered to your doorsteps. Cause it's really, really helping. So, uh, let's see here. Transportation committee, you met tonight.
We did. And one of our committee members thought he was at a finance committee. He thought he went to the wrong, showed up at the wrong one because, um, we did spend our time reviewing the, um, well, first of all, the first news is the city sewer, um, and roadway repair project has, has gone up to, has been advertised. So hopefully we will get some bids in on that. But what we did spend most of our meeting today was going over the projects that we have scheduled and our funding sources for them. Such as the, um, Bethel Lincoln Roundabout that we, uh, that we got the million five grant for the construction part. We outlined where the rest of the money would be coming from. And we did that for all of the projects that we anticipate doing in the next couple of years. And then we had, um, we had quite a discussion too on other funding opportunities for, um, the projects on our, um, transportation or, or tip that we could perhaps, um, uh, apply for, for various funding sources. So we, we talked about that and then we talked about our impact fees, our transportation impact fees. And, um, Noah gave us a very detailed accounting of where we're starting each of our impact fee, um, account balances. And he has then on his chart listed all of the expenditures we anticipate coming out from those. And then he will be, he updates that regularly. And so we can keep track of the money coming in and what we have obligated against it. Not what we already have contracts for, but what we anticipate having contracts for also. And then Nick gave us a, um, great breakdown of per, projected traffic impact fee revenue based on the applications he has in now for permits over the next two years. And if all of those, um, had projects built out, uh, within the next couple of years and there were no hitches, we would be looking at approximately, I think it was $4 million total over the next couple of years in traffic impact fees. So then we, anyway, that's what we talked about. We talked about potential funding. We talked about, um, obligations. We've already got against that funding. And then we had a bit of a discussion on the Bay Street pedestrian path and the progress that is coming on, uh, along with that, we're still in the right of way acquisition phase. And Mark indicated that there may be an adjustment to the contract with our right of way agent. So there will be more to come on that. Um, Mark and the mayor and Noah, we're going to get together and look at that financial situation in a little more detail and bring it back to full council. So basically that was our meeting and I would ask Scott and Jay to please add any comments you may have.
I think you did a good job. Um, I think the number of units in the pipeline are, it's up to 1,686, if that's what I remember correctly.
Yeah, something.
Staggering number.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. Thank you for your report, Beck. Uh, fest- festival, chimes and lights. Anything to report?
Well, we took off and we were very excited about planning for this year's festival. We're working on a theme. And then a little bit of water got thrown on the plans when we heard that we may not be to the point where we can have people congregate for the festival. So that changes a lot, but we're hopeful that, um, well, we're still going to have the, the tree decorating contest. We're still going to have the Jolly Jingle Run. Um, and we're trying to make it, um, as close to what we had before as possible, but we're still waiting on the governor's mandates. So, um, we're gonna have a lovely festival. It just may not be the same as what we've had in the past. And we'll let you know about the theme, but we're working on something like Christmas around the world kind of thing, um, featuring various, um, countries that, for a while. Anyway, we're, we're on to it. We'll see, we'll see what happens. Our next meeting is March 15th.
Councilmember Ashby, do you have a question?
I did, and I don't know if it's for Cindy, Robert, if it's for you. But when is there any anticipation that we may be able to have gatherings again?
That's.
Yeah, the maximum is 200 right now and you have to have a plan in place and how you will social distance and all of that. And of course, you know, that would be nigh to impossible with the big event unless we had, I don't know, right now it's not looking great.
Okay, it, it's basically the same rules we were looking at before. I just thought maybe that, that, the time element had changed.
And there's, I just recently read where we're gonna hang out here in phase two, uh, for a few weeks before they even start talking about what additional phases, uh, start to look like. So, um, you know.
There's that delay.
Thing I heard in this regard was that the governor's office have like figured out what the criteria is to move out of phase two. So, yeah, we're a ways away.
I believe you're correct.
This now on top of the UK, uh, words, now they found a, an African divergent. So who knows?
Thank, thank you, council member Dorsey.
I, I'm just.
Always such happy news coming from that department, right?
Move along with your Christmas, chimes and lights around the world.
All right, land use committee.
Well, I'm going to say that, uh, I, uh, must have stepped out for the, for the, of the meeting for a minute because I was elected the chair of the committee, uh, for this year. Uh, I, I realized that tonight that I'd have to make a report and I would suddenly realize I need to take better notes. Uh, but in reviewing it, uh, most of our, before I asked, uh, council member Deener to step in, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, both the comprehensive plan amendments and shoreline master plan, uh, update and reviewing those. Uh, again, I, we, we say it continually, but, uh, I'm always impressed with what staff has done. They managed to track this work and brief us on it. There wasn't anything that was, um, an eye opener or, or, or need to bring to attention right now. And then we did have discussion about park plan updates and I think there'll be more coming down the road on that, uh, with what we're going to do with parks. And that'd be my report right now, unless, uh, the previous chair, uh, council member Deener wants to weigh in.
I'll just say that, uh, Nick provided us with a comprehensive list of our parks and open space assets. And we have a lot more land than I think I was aware of, uh, but much of it is not usable. And so we, we talked about some initial blushing on program, um, for some of the functional park spaces. So the council will hear more about that.
I, I think council member Rosa Pepe is correct. He was a few minutes late to the meeting. The first order of business was electing a chair. And that's what happens when you're late.
Actually, I think I was the one that was really late. So somehow it still worked out in my favor.
Councilmember. And race. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm always impressed with, um, our departments, but especially with, um, Nick watching out for what the county is doing with their countywide planning policies or CPPs. Um, I think it's very important that we maintain our urban standards, especially in the urban growth areas that the county administers. And I'm very pleased that he's looking at those, uh, because I think that's where, that will eventually go to the city and will have substandard development if we're not watching out carefully.
Wait. All right, uh, lodging tax, Jay, that's you too.
Yep, uh, Brandy's, uh, scheduling a meeting, uh, for March, uh, just trying to herd the cats. And then we'll be getting together with Noah, see where we are, uh, with our reimbursements and what funding is and see if, I mean, you know, Cindy brought it up, you know, we're gonna, looks like we're not gonna be in any phase anytime soon. So, uh, uh, may just put a damper on any more expenditures, but at least we'll have that information about where we are financially.
Okay, sewer advisory, do you have anything to report, Cindy?
No, no meeting yet.
Okay. And I don't have anything for outside agencies. Beck, it's usually you and I. You have anything to share?
Yeah, what I would share, um, is March 4th, from one to four, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council is having a retreat on the CPPs. But we are devoting that retreat to the equi, an equity element. We have not had equity addressed in our CPPs before. And then the executive committee is, is tentatively scheduling a workshop for the executive board for the CPPs in April. This would be an additional meeting or a workshop that is not on your calendars yet. Well, you, you may have received a tentative notice of that because we're going to have to, um, put those out for public comment in May and we want to make sure in April that everyone is understanding and we don't have major revisions. The other thing that I will mention is at the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Meeting last Friday, John Winans attended. He is the Olympic Region Administrator for the Department of Transportation. And he addressed many issues for us. What I thought was particularly interesting, and I didn't ask Brandon, um, the gentleman from, uh, Puget Power that spoke earlier, but those DOT crews just going out and working because of COVID, where they used to put two or three workers in a truck and send them to a construction site. Because of COVID, they can't do that. So they're all taking out, drive, driving in their own trucks because there's some sort of limit of they can only be in the vehicle an hour if they were to have multiple people in there. So the Department of Transportation has really worked diligently and creatively to be able to get some of these projects done. It's really been a strain on human resources as well as, as well as their physical assets just to get some of these construction projects, um, completed for us. So that's basically my report.
Expect. All right, on to the mayor's report. Uh, start with the community center. Um, you know, I, I know that, uh, economic development and tourism got a kind of an overlay and a lay of the land. You know, we have the community center project. And then we've also now, it's, you know, we've got public plazas and other elements that, uh, we hadn't considered when, when we were doing the community center and design for those things and funding for those can, can wait. Uh, there's gonna be a shoreline restoration element. And I think Waterman Partners is gonna help with that, Water Group and mitigation partners, um, and with their mitigation bank. But as we learned, uh, with the sea level rise discussion, we had, um, that, that segment of Bay Street from outside my office window around the corner to Frederick, um, is at sea level and already floods. And we were about to, our, our consultant Bryce Fergus Miller was about to hire a surveyor to survey the community center site. And I, so I've tapped the brakes on that. It doesn't seem logical to me to survey one site independently when we've got this challenge related to the roadway. So I'm asking for a scope, or Nick is, is engaged in this process for a very minimal design, 10% design, uh, and engineering from Bay Street to Geiger, on Bay Street from Geiger to Frederick and the design will include elevations, uh, surveying obviously to, so we know these elevations, uh, furniture improvements and utility locations. I've had, um, conversations with, uh, the residential developer in the bank and they want to see the scope. Uh, but they are receptive to sharing in the cost of this, uh, once we know what the cost is. And, uh, Nick is indicating almost a hundred thousand dollars unfortunately for this, this element. I don't have it yet. So when I get more information, I'll first talk to these, uh, the other two folks and, but I think we've got to know where the road needs, what height the road needs to be and, uh, where the sidewalks do you need to be before anybody can design a building. So more, more to come on that. Uh, we talked about the Gors Coalition and, uh, the lobbyists, that was my, gonna be a report there. I gave my state a city, stated the city report, uh, I gave my state of city, State of the City report to the Merchants Association. And one of the things I learned when I attended their meeting is that they're $800 short of the money that they need to buy the hanging baskets. That represents, the baskets are about $100 apiece. So maybe they've got a little more than half of what they need. And they also need to make irrigation repairs. So I left that meeting buying a basket for $100. So if anybody else wants to be a, what they're calling a Bay Street bloomer, get ahold of Corinne, who's the president. And I'm certain that they'll take your money. I want to talk, you know, I keep, you know, Cindy's report really reinforced it. I keep stalling on a retreat because I want to do it in person and I prefer not to have masks on our face. But so I want you guys to think about that. I, I think the indication I got from you last time we started talking about retreat is probably a half a day. You wanted it just to be the council and myself. Some things that I want to talk about, we did this organizational assessment and I keep pulling elements out of it. And bringing them forward as, in a crisis mode versus an organized, organized plan. And I, and I want to talk about the elements and the recommendations of that. I know you, it was given to you, but it's, it's a huge document and I'd like us to all talk about it collectively. And, and talk about, we have a monthly meeting and of projects. And this document, that it's an hour long meeting and we're moving really fast. So this at least easily an hour to talk about all the different projects that we've got going on. It's a nine-page document, the notes from that, all the projects and, and a few bullet points on each one. So I think it's very informative of everything we've got going on and how hard we're peddling here in the city of Port Orchard. So what are your guys, I, I virtual, in person, what do you, what do you think, Councilmember Lucarelli?
In person? I think we could be socially distanced. I know I have been vaccinated. I've had both of mine and a number maybe are vaccinated. But I know there are places now where we actually could meet and be socially distanced and be just fine. We have so much.
We would be required to wear a mask.
Yeah, who cares? That's okay.
We can do it in the council chambers. That's, I can, I can, I can social distance eight of us in that room. There's no problem at all. We could figure that out. And now the next question, others in person, on virtual?
I agree with everything Cindy said. I'd like to see it in person and distanced and, and do what we need to do.
And I'd like to see a facilitator.
That was my next.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Okay, and Sophie is, if she's not on her maternity leave, she does such a good job for us. Pretty confident she's not going to be available because she's on a maternity leave. I like, go ahead.
In May.
In May, she leaves in May?
Yeah.
So we might be able to squeeze it and I'll reach out to her. You guys are going to make me take on some new things to get prepared. So, but I'm up to the task. So I'll reach out to Sophie tomorrow if I can and try to report back and start. We won't do it tonight, but start thinking about dates. You know, it'd be a half day and I'll, I'll bring some dates to my next mayor's report and, and with my next mayor's report in two weeks. And then for us to consider. Councilmember Deener?
Just circling back to your State of the City address, are you, is that something you're going to put on our website?
Not yet. I'm going to give it, it will go on our website when I give it to you. We're going to look at agendas tomorrow morning and I want to get it on the agenda. I'm going to do two all-staff meetings in March where I, I I did this for the first time last year and unfortunately this year it'll be virtual. But virtually everything else I do is virtual. So I've given it three times, Chamber of Commerce, the merchants. And today I gave it to a Rotary Club. So it's about 30 plus minutes, then questions. And I did it 15 this, this morning, hitting things, Rotary wants 10, 15 minutes for a program and, and then ask some questions. So I did it pretty fast today, so.
I'm glad you're refining it on others before you bring it to us. Appreciate that.
It's just, you know, I would have liked to have done it in January, but it seemed like the last few meetings we left about nine o'clock. So I didn't think you wanted to hear another 30 minutes from the mayor. So it's out of respect for your time. So, but I will get it on the, be nice on a work study, but it could always be a light meeting in presentations. So, and it's just recapping what we did last year, you know, things that are in our budget. You, you guys should be intimately aware. I shouldn't, I shouldn't take along with you guys, shouldn't have too many questions. Let's see here, AWC Action Days, I attended that. I think Councilmember Ashby did too. And I, I went to a number of sessions. It was primarily related, related to legislative back activities. And my takeaway is Zoom meetings aren't going anywhere. They had more participation in that and it's a more effective way to, for folks than particular, somebody that lives in Eastern Washington to participate in, in a conference or a program like that. So I know that's not good for your industry, Councilmember Kuchardi, to hear that. So. But I've got, I sent some information out about park survey signs and I just want you, and I've gotten a little bit of feedback from a couple of you. I'm going to give a present, hopefully give you a little presentation of that at our next council meeting, what that would look like. And I want to show you, a very small element of it is the signs. It's the questions and gathering the data and the social media aspect. So I have our consultant subcontracting to Serotonin, who did the outreach on our community center and the Imagine in Port Orchard. And they just think very creatively and are very good at getting feedback from the community. And we need to, you know, we're, we're working on our parks plan. I'm not as satisfied as I, as I should be. And I don't think Mr. Bond is either with our consultant and how long this is taking. And I think we could do a little, we could, we could help this along by giving, get some feedback from the, the community about our parks and our trails and what they want to see and how satisfied they are with what we have. So more to come on that one. And three more little things, I, John and I participated in Senator Randall's virtual town hall meeting. And she called on me for the very first question, so I'm glad I was there and on time. So I was able to ask my question. And Janine shared with me, you know, we're, we're broadcasting on Facebook Live. We post our council meetings on YouTube the next day. And I, we, I was told today that we have 116 YouTube subscribers to the city's YouTube channel. So we are reaching people, even though we're not in the council chambers. So, and I'd already talked about the sales tax. So that's everything I have. And let's go to the report of the department heads. Mr. Dorsey, you were, you have anything to share?
Yeah, I just, you'd mentioned the retreat and maybe having it here with eight people. I just want to remind you that maybe it's a mix between Zoom, because we still have staff. And I mean, we have 20.
You weren't paying attention, the council doesn't want staff.
Oh, I wasn't paying attention. That's, that'll be a new thing.
Yes.
Do you want no staff at all at the retreat?
Yeah, we might have Brandy present to run some audio, or Janine to run some equipment and a consultant or a facilitator. And, but yeah, we're going to, we still, there's a couple of components for our new equipment. And that'll be part of the equation too, is we've got to have the new equipment functioning too. So, but it'll happen soon. Anything else, Mr. Dorsey? All right, Mr. Bond? I don't have much tonight, but the McCormick Development Agreement did get recorded and they made the payment for our legal fees related to that agreement. So that is now in effect and the traffic impact fees that we adopted last week took effect today. And so I'm happy to be able to wrap up both of those projects. So that's all I have for tonight. Wonderful. We have our HR manager Debbie Lund here tonight. We might as well call on her and ask what's going on in HR.
HR is just very busy, multiple recruitments going on right now. And don't really have anything else to add.
So those multiple, we've got, we had Public Works interviews last Friday. And we've got a engineering, inter-level engineering position out on the street, an IT position on the street. And they've been conducting multiple interviews for police officers. So she had, she has been very busy touching virtually every department. Ms. Archer?
Nothing to report this evening, thank you.
Wow, Mr. Cracker? You still printing money?
Yes, but I have nothing to report this evening. Next month, perhaps the study session, we might do, if we can pull this off in time, might do a brief full review of the annual financial statements for 2020. I mailed the council our monthly report through December. Take a look through, see if you have questions, but we might do a little more thorough discussion of it if we have time at the March study session. So keep an eye.
Kuchardi?
I just didn't know if Noah wanted to mention anything about the SAO exit interview we had the other day.
Oh, yeah.
The full council.
Oh, yeah, that's a great point. Thank you. So we did have our exit audit with SAO and again, another successful audit from the city's standpoint. They looked very closely at a number of projects, including the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway. And once again, found that we used all our resources and paid for that project appropriately. So everything was good there and everything checked out with the rest of our federal audit, as well as our accountability and performance management. So another great year and they'll be back in about two months. It's just a revolving, we should just hire an SAO auditor on staff is maybe where we're going this new world.
Congratulations, knowing your team.
Good work.
Here, I would just comment for the public's benefit, SAO is State Auditor's Office, so the acronym.
Yep, State Auditor's Office, that is correct. All right, who's left? Chief Brown?
Yeah, thank you. I actually do want to really compliment Debbie as well. We are holding interviews monthly. So that's a lot of candidates to go through and that's a lot of coordination. We've got internal interviewers and then we have two people from the outside that sit on those boards as well. And that's just a lot of work. So I really, really appreciate what she's putting in. So we've got good candidates coming through the pipe and we're, we're, we're pretty hopeful. So, thank you.
Okay, Brandy, you.
You're muted. Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Just want to let you know that we are, Janine and I are working through the new webinar platform for Zoom. So we're working out all the kinks, we'll get there. And then as you may have been aware, last meeting as well as this meeting, we are live streaming through Facebook. So we're continuing to monitor that to see how, how that works and make sure that it's something that the city wants to continue to do. And I'll let you know on that piece. And then the other thing that I have is actually, that's it.
So your homework assignment for me, if you could, is I've gave you a couple of things I'd like to discuss at a retreat, or retreat. So if you could get back to me with what, since it's your retreat, what you guys want to talk about at the retreat. So, and I typically sure somewhat, somewhat in long-range planning and that type of stuff. So, but staffing and the projects that we're currently undertaking is, is, is what I was going to share with you. We are to our second citizen comment period. And if, is there anyone from the public attending, Brandy?
We have one person in attendance and I will wait for them to click on, raise their hand. And once I see them, I will let you know. And if not, I'll let you know.
All right, so we're calling, last call on citizen comments this evening?
I see no hand raised.
Wonderful. And I can't remember the last time we've got done before eight o'clock, so I'm feeling pretty good about this tonight. So. All right, have a good evening, the rest of your evening and we'll see you soon.
Good night, everybody.
Right.